September 19, 2017, we're here at 6:00 PM at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas. The Granberry City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon J.C. Campbell. See, I don't think... J.C. Campbell to lead us there on invitation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by our Councilman Tony Mobley. All right, please.
Here with me. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to do the business of the city, we ask that you give this council wisdom and guidance to do what is best for the citizens of Granberry. We thank you for allowing us to live in a country that gives us that opportunity. Hopefully, we will always remember that and let our lives show that that's what we would like to do. We thank you for this day. We thank you for our military who is throughout the world, giving us the opportunity to meet like we are tonight. Watch over them, lead them, and guide them, and keep them safe and bring them home for these things. We ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
If you join me in the pledge to our nation's flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our state flag. On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I'm glad to see everybody out there tonight. We've got a pretty short agenda, hopefully, there, so we're going to move into it. How many people following the Granberry Pirates, huh? Okay, how about them Pirates? They're doing really good this year, so let's stay behind them. Let's stay behind them, get them out there. We're going to move into the presentations we've got tonight. We've got a couple of presentations. Our first presentation is by Shelley Young, the Alzheimer's Program Manager, and she is going to give us an overview on Alzheimer's Association services in Hood County. Shelley?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you, and thanks to J.C. Campbell for organizing this. He's a... In case you hadn't figured this out, he's a go-getter, and he makes things happen, and we appreciate that very much. And he's been actively involved with the Alzheimer's Association for a few years now, but I just wanted to share with you folks what the Alzheimer's Association does and can do for the residents of Hood County. We are a national organization, but we're based locally in Fort Worth, and we are proud and privileged to serve Hood County. And we are actively involved in some different programs down here, and so I wanted to just share about that. We actually have three things coming up in the near future that might be of interest to the residents of Hood County. First of all, we have a movie screening next week. It's called "The Father and the Bear," and this will be our second time to show it here in Granberry. It's going to be on Thursday, the 28th of September, at 10:00 AM at the Showbiz Cinema. We also have a support group that meets here in Granberry, and they have been meeting for many years now, I believe over 10 years, and that group is facilitated by Evelyn Garen. And that group meets on, I believe, the first Monday of each month at 10 o'clock at Acton United Methodist Church. And then I wanted to make you aware of one other program that we have coming up, and then I'll go a little bit more in detail about some of the things we can do here in Hood County. But we also, if anyone is interested, we're going to have an education program, actually an e-Rath, down in Stevensville on Thursday, and we have a researcher from Fort Worth, and he's going to be talking about the current state of Alzheimer's research and some of the things that are happening in our area, particularly at the University of North Texas Health Science Center. So I think those are all some things that might be of interest to the folks that are here in this room. But just so you can understand what the Alzheimer's Association does and who we are as an organization, again, we are based out of Chicago. We're a national organization, but we do serve also Hood County. And there are many things that we can do. First of all, I'd like to also say that a lot of people think because we're called the Alzheimer's Association that we only serve people with Alzheimer's disease, and that is not accurate. We serve people no matter what the cause of their memory loss and their cognitive problems. And so we always want folks to know that we're here to serve them no matter what a diagnosis may be, or if they're even just beginning to have concerns for themselves or someone else. And I put information on the table as I came in, but there are our chapter brochures, and they give our 800 number as well as our web address. And the 800 number is really the gateway to our services, so anyone can call our 800 number any time of the day or night to talk with someone, to receive consultation, to get help in terms of finding a physician, any of the resources that they might need to access. But what do we do here locally? Well, again, we have a support group. We do education programs frequently here in Hood County. We have a case management program that we can actually send social workers into folks' homes and assist them with connecting with the resources that they need, whether it be bars in a bathroom, handicap bars, or getting assistance through the Veterans Administration. And so they're very knowledgeable of the local resources, as well as things that may be available through the state. And then we also have a unique program called REACH. And REACH is a caregiver program where we actually, again, will come into people's homes. We do education with them one-on-one, face-to-face, and help them to understand better what's happening with their loved ones, and then also to make sure that they are taking care of themselves, because we know that caregivers are at higher risk for developing health concerns and are often less likely to take care of themselves because the role of caregiver can be overwhelming and all-encompassing. So just, again, wanted to make you aware of who we are, what we do. Any questions, any concerns that someone might have, they can call, again, that 800 number any time of the day or night, and that is on the back of our brochure, and just know that we're here to help.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is going to be a presentation from, I guess, Mickey Sheardon and the Opera Guild. They're going to do a gift to the city of Granberry for the Opera House from the Opera Guild. So I think there's a whole lot of folks there that's a part of that, so if you all want to come up. You don't have any trouble getting up on stage, do you guys? I mean...
They don't.
Okay.
My name is Mary L. O'Reilly, and I'm the president of the Opera Guild of Granberry. And I want to say that we are proud to be able to give this donation to the city and to the Granberry Theater Company, for them to be able to put bars and mirrors in their dance rehearsal room. It's been a while. We've voted to do this two and a half years ago. However, it's been a while for them to be able to get the okay to go ahead and get it done. So anyway, this is going to be a great help to them, and this is our whole mission, is to help the Opera House and give it what it needs for the Granberry Theater Company, or whatever theater company is there, to give the best performances that they possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. I'm Mickey Sheardon with the Granberry Theater Company, and we have some very special guests here with us from the Academy that I would like to introduce. First of all, we have Ms. Audrey Anne McKee and Ms. Emmy Vaughn, two of our phenomenal Academy students. And you've... If you've been at the Opera House, and I know you all have been, you've seen them on stage, quite recently with Audrey Anne being in one of our main stage productions. And then we also have Taylor Donaldson. Taylor is one of our Theater Academy Directors, and he, together with Dominic Hubbard, are doing a fabulous job. I think we have just surpassed our record enrollment for Granberry Theater Academy. This is now our third year, third full year, and we've surpassed our all-time enrollment high, so we're very excited about that. And let me just say, on behalf of Granberry Theater Company and Granberry Theater Academy, we are very appreciative of Mary and the Granberry Opera Guild. They are always so good about supporting the work that is done at the Granberry Opera House, and this is just one more thing that is really going to benefit particularly our students, but really all of our, even the adult performers who are performing in shows, and to be able to train and rehearse up there with these bars and mirrors. I'm not really a dancer, so I don't know the importance of the mirrors and bars, but I'm going to let Taylor say something just very quickly and let him kind of explain to you how we're going to use these.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us. I also am not a dancer, so that's why we brought two dancers with us here tonight, and they can let you... They can tell you how important it is for us to have these. Dominic and I came in about a month ago and saw the need for these and saw how amazing these students were. We already had a great number of students that wanted to come back. But like Mickey said, we've had record-breaking numbers just this fall semester, and we know that we want to continue to grow this Academy. We have a motto which is "Love, Support, and Inspire." Love what you do, inspire those around you, and support those behind you that have supported you as well. And so we want to continue to do that, and so we thank the Opera Guild for allowing us this donation so we can continue to grow this department.
We also have one of our parents here, Wendy Vaughn. Wendy, wave your hand. You don't do things like this, like an academy, without some very, very supportive parents, and Wendy is one of our most supportive, so we thank her for coming out tonight. And we also have one of our board... Another one of our board members here, Paul Hyde, is one of our board members with Granberry Theater Company. We appreciate him as well. So thank you very much, and we appreciate it.
Hang on there. We're going to get a picture, okay?
Oh, yes.
We're all about pictures. We're not about dancing.
Yep.
What did I do with that?
Mickey got it.
Okay. And yes, we do truly appreciate everything the Opera Guild does. The Opera Guild does not only just raise money to help put things in the Opera House and do those kind of things. If you notice, they are a working opera guild. They're working. They're ushering. They're seating people. Anything that needs to be done in that Opera House there to help. So we do appreciate everything that the Opera Guild does for that Opera House. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move into our consent agenda. We've got several items on the consent agenda, Council. We've got the consider approving the city council meeting minutes of September 5, 2017, regular meeting. Consider holding the first regular city council meeting in October on Monday, October 2, 2017, at 6:00 PM at City Hall. This is due to a TML meeting that could coincide with that. Also, we've got consider adopting orders 1760, amending the city of Granberry Personnel Manual. Number four, consider adopting orders 1761, amending the budget to General Fund, Utility Fund, Airport Fund, and Tourism Fund for fiscal year 2016-17. Number five, consider approving the purchase of two 2018 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles from Caldwell County out of Caldwell, Texas, in the amount of $63,576. And also consider approving a proposal from InstaForm Technologies LLC for the 2018 Sewer Rehab CIP Pipe Burst Project in the amount of $310,270, utilizing the Texas statewide cooperative purchasing contract number 2462-14 to continue pipe bursting the areas of Deputy Larry Miller Drive, Stone Street, and North Cherry Lane. And also, number seven, consider approving the Energy-Water Interconnect Agreement between Acton Municipal District A-Mud and the city of Granberry. And also, number eight, consider adopting orders 1762, amending the policy for the installation of public and private infrastructure, also known as the Public Improvement Policy, or PIP. I think our city manager, Chris Kaufman, would like to talk on a couple of these items here, if you would, Chris. Number nine, consider approving... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Chris. Number nine, here and out of scratch, consider approving the Visit Granberry incorporation fiscal year 2017-2018 budget. So, Council, you've had an opportunity to see all those, and like I said, I think Chris wants to talk on a couple of these items, if you would, please, Chris.
If we could, I'd like to table items three and eight for later council meeting. I need to fine-tune some of those a little bit still.
Okay, so Chris has suggested that we table number three and eight. Council will need a motion to do that and a date.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Councilman Allen has a motion. I'm assuming he wants to do that October 2, the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to table number three and eight and to put them on the October 2 agenda.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Couch. Council, any more discussion on that? All in favor of tabling those two items? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are tabled. Going into the consent agenda again, is there any other items that the council would choose to change or to discuss, or even to pull off the consent agenda at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion, Councilman Mobley?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Council, is there any more discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved, minus item number three and date, which was tabled. Next, we're going to move into the deliberation agenda, the first item being number 10 here, to receive a presentation by George Morgan &amp; Sneed, PC, on the review and evaluation of the city of Granberry's existing payroll policy procedures and internal controls. I'm going to ask Ava Gregory to step up there to the mic, and I think she's got some guest speakers.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, city manager. I wanted to introduce our CPA firm, George Morgan &amp; Sneed. And Nereo Mateas are here to present to you on this agenda item. They were hired by the city to evaluate and review our policies, current procedures, and our internal control, and make any recommendations. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Nereo Mateas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name again is Nereo Mateas. I'm a CPA with George Morgan &amp; Sneed, and with me is Peter Morgan, CPA. He is one of the principals of the firm. I am here to present our findings and recommendations from our engagement to review and evaluate the city's existing policies and procedures and internal controls over payroll. Our recommendations should be viewed as opportunities for strengthening the city's internal control over payroll. The city has internal controls over payroll in place, such as time cards are approved by department heads, payroll data is downloaded from ADP Payroll System by the Assistant Finance Director, and then uploaded to the general ledger software. Bank accounts are reconciled regularly. Monthly financial statements are reviewed by both the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director. However, in performing our analysis of the city's existing payroll policies, procedures, and internal controls, we identified places where controls should exist but are missing. In the slide that I'm going to show you is the current payroll process. Electronic time cards are approved by the supervisor or department head. The Human Resource Specialist checks all approved time cards for any missing time, generates a pay data batch, which is in Excel format, that has the employee names, hours worked, and deductions, and makes the necessary adjustments. Sends the pay data batch to the ADP Payroll System, and then ADP Payroll processes the information and sends the payroll register to HR Specialist. HR Specialist checks the payroll register for mistakes and then resubmits the payroll register for completion of the payroll processing. ADP sends payroll stops to HR Specialist for distribution. As you can see, the payroll process is performed by one person, and there is no review. We recommend the Assistant Finance Director should get a copy of the payroll register for review. The payroll register should be reviewed for reasonableness of hours and pay, and also checked for adjustments. Another recommended control is to review the HR Specialist rate and pay periodically. The ADP Payroll System has capability to generate a customized audit trail report that can be used in checking pay rate changes, employee additions, longevity, et cetera. This feature provides the necessary information to perform internal audit procedures. We recommend that the Finance Department explore and utilize the ADP's audit trail report to verify new employee addition information, pay rate changes, as an internal audit function on changes to employee records related to wage rate increases based on merit for staff that report directly to the city council. We understand that there has been discussions, and as a result, changes were made in the policies and procedures on the issue of authorization and documentation requirements. Section 16.4.1 of the city's personnel manual partially addresses some of our recommendations below. We recommend that the city establish policies and procedures for authorizing merit-based increases and documentation requirements to support increases for staff that report directly to the city council. We recommend that the annual evaluation be done at the same time period required for employees that do not report to the city council. The evaluation sheet, the personal action request form, and a copy of the minutes approving the merit-based increase should be the basis for authorization and documentation supporting payroll rate changes. On the use of personal action request, PER, we noted that for merit-based increases, the personnel manual does not require the personal action request to be completed. However, the personal action request form has been completed and filed in the individual employee files in the past until 2016. In 2016, a detailed spreadsheet, or they call it salary adjustment sheet by department reflecting merit increases, was submitted to the Human Resource Department instead of the PER. We recommend that the city continue completing the PER forms for all employees receiving merit-based increases in order to update individual employee files. This ends my presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, is there any questions, concerns about this presentation?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Parsons.
Okay. In the ADP Audit Trail Report, you recommend that the Finance Department utilize those audit trails. Would you suggest that that be the same assistant as that's reviewing the payroll registers?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Assistant Finance Director should do it.
And how often should this audit trail be done? Once a month, twice a year?
It's going to be up to management on the frequency of this testing. It can be once a month or every quarter.
And then in the personnel action requests, as I understand it, you're asking that every employee get a personal action request as opposed to being on a single spreadsheet?
Yes, sir. Because right now, if you go to the individual file, employee file, without the payroll action request form, you don't know the job title, the current job title, the pay rate for merit-based increases, until you go to another form, the salary adjustment form, where the increases were made. So that the employee file will be adjusted to the current status, the PER forms will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any more questions?
I have a comment.
Chris has a comment?
I would like to let you all know that all these recommendations were put into place as soon as they discussed them and identified the needs, and so all these things are taking place. And I will say that HR has not had a single problem with internal controls that's ever been identified, so there's no things run awry, so to speak. We're in good shape, but these internal controls are always wise and recommended, and we appreciate it. As we all know, the reason for this audit was over one employee that reports to the council that was received a merit pay, and so it triggered this whole effect to look at our whole system comprehensively, and I think it's made us better, and I think we'll make progress from here.
Chris, I appreciate your following up on and taking care of all those issues. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Chris, I...
It's round.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilperson Parsons was asking, you know, how often will we do these? Are you thinking more like a quarterly or monthly or...
I'll defer to Ava. That's her Bailey Wick. I would like to say that, again, we've not had any problems, but having a randomness to it really helps, and I think that we'll let her figure out.
We spend money for it, so let's use it.
Yeah.
Yes, I was just going to comment on that, Mr. Councilman Allen. We ran this ADP Audit Report, Audit Trail Report, and that really documents every changes that were made in payroll, even if a name is changed, so we can really run this report monthly. And my plan is to run it monthly, and either myself or the Assistant Finance Director will be going through it and spot-check it, and at the same time, go back to HR and request to see the PAR form that Nereo had mentioned and match it up if we see any changes to make sure that the documentation are in the file. So I would like to do it monthly.
Thank you very much.
Council, any more questions? Thanks for your presentation. Thank you.
Money well spent, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve the recommended changes to payroll policies and procedures, and confirm the action of the City Manager in implementing them.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Parsons to go ahead and approve the changes in the policies that have been put in place, and we have a second by Councilperson Myers. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Council. Our next item is a public hearing, and consider approving a request of Frank Loud for the construction of a single-family water well. I'm gonna call on Chris, you've got a staff person to give a report on that, do you?
You bet. As you all know, this is a normal occurrence that we have to consider whenever folks are in our ETJ or in the city that are more than the required distance from our water system. We do have a situation here where they're over 3,000 feet, and so I'll turn it over to Rick and let him color in the lines and tell us what's going on.
Mayor, can I ask the question? I may be bidding on building these people home, they have talked to me about this, but it'd be better if I dismissed myself from this.
Well, we could address our attorney, attorney, you think he's, it's up to Councilman Allen? It's gonna be up to you, Councilman Allen, if you wanna set.
I would feel better if I wouldn't. Here.
Excuse yourself.
We'll get you a form to fill out, too.
Yeah. It's up to Councilman Allen. It's gonna be up to you, Councilman Allen, if you wanna set.
I would feel better if I wouldn't. Here.
Okay. Excuse yourself.
We'll get you a form to fill out, too.
Yeah. It's up to Councilman Allen. It's gonna be up to you, Councilman Allen, if you wanna set.
I would feel better if I wouldn't. Here.
Okay. Excuse yourself.
We'll get you a form to fill out, too.
Yeah. It's up to Councilman Allen.
Thank you.
So at this time, Councilman Allen has accused himself for a conflict of interest, possibly? Mr. Crownover?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Mr. Kaufman, Frank Loud, Mr. Frank Loud is making application for a single-family water well located on his property at 1900 Jean Court. Mr. and Mrs. Loud are sitting right here in the front row tonight with us. This is in the city's ETJ, and it is our CCN. City ordinance states if services from another city or the utility district is not available within 1,000 feet of the property line of the subject property, a private water well or irrigation well for single-family residents may be drilled. And you've got a aerial in your packet. 1900 Jean Court is at the corner of Jean Court and Andrews Court. We're talking about the area in the vicinity of Loop 567 and Highway 4. We have water main at that intersection, turns and goes from FM 4 down to the conference center, right there by Garcia's Restaurant. That's a landmark for you right there. However, Mr. Loud's property is a little over 3,000 feet away from this water main of ours. The application seems to be in order. It's a 150-foot domestic well for his casing. He has not constructed septic as of tonight. He has a letter from his well driller. All things seem to be in order. Staff recommendation is for approval. As I said, Mr. Loud and his wife are here with us. He said he would be glad to answer any questions, should Council have any.
Thank you, Mr. Crownover. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. As like Rick has noted, that the applicant is in the audience, but if anybody wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns? Like I said, the applicant is in the audience, if you wanna talk to them also.
I'd like to know how big the lot is.
We've got one question up. Does, Rick, do you know how big the lot is?
There's a survey plaque in your packet, right there. Sorry. 1.27 acres, I believe.
1.67?
2.7. 1.27 acres, sir.
1.27, yes.
Provided by the applicant. Uh huh.
Yeah. Survey didn't make it to the packet.
Oh, no.
I just wanted to make sure you had enough for both well and a septic.
Established neighborhood, a lot of private water wells, septic tanks down here, pretty part of town.
And you just met the amount of feet it is away from the?
Well over 3,000 feet, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Council, any more questions or concerns for Mr. Crownover or the applicant? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for the water well.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers, I'm sorry. Councilman Parsons.
There you go.
Stay with me here, stay with me. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Loud.
Congratulations.
At this time, we will now declare that the Granbury City Council, somebody wanna bring Mr. Allen back in here? So we can declare that he is still with us? At this time, we will now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened an open session, and all the members are present. The City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551.071, "House Stationed with the Attorney Threatening or Pending Litigation, Durham versus City of Granbury and McGowan versus State of Texas." Section 551.074, "Personnel Matters," municipal judge and renewal of his review. And section 551.087, "Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations." This time, the Council will go into executive session. Council is now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. Council, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
I'd like to make a motion that the City Manager be authorized to execute an agreement with bigger staff in relationship to Senate Bill 1004.
So we have a motion for our City Manager to, how'd you word that, Mr. Parsons, to?
Execute an agreement with bigger staff?
Execute an agreement with bigger staff?
With bigger staff in relation to Senate Bill 1004.
Okay. In relationship to Senate Bill 1004. We have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Couch? Council?
Allen.
Oh, it's Councilman Allen, I'm sorry. Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We'll look forward to the City Manager executing that. Any more discussion, Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
In executive session, we met with Judge Hines, the municipal judge of the City of Granbury, formerly an assistant police chief who's been with the city a long time, well-known here. His review was well-received, there was a lot of compliments about the job he's doing and taking care of municipal judgeship and court business, and we were all complimentary of Allen and his demeanor and his hard work for the city. I think the City Council will back me in my motion to give Mr. Judge Hines a 3% raise increase for the Physical Year 27-2018, and authorize the City Manager to execute a par with signature for that transaction.
Second.
We got a motion, and we got a second. Council, any more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Council, any more discussion?
I would like to note that on the consent agenda, we set the meeting for Monday, October 2nd, to allow you all to be able to travel to Houston on Tuesday, and the hotels are gonna require that we, you pay for it on yourself, we're gonna give you a check for the hotel room soon, and you can go ahead and put that in the bank and pay yourself or whatever, but they're gonna need you to. They won't let us do the credit card thing through the phone like we've been doing at the hotels in Houston. So just get your credit card out and ready, and-
Or cash.
Save all your receipts and bring them to us, we'll reimburse you. But we will be writing a check for the complete hotel stay in advance to you, so that you'll have that money in advance if you just use your card or your check or whatever, cash. Sorry, but that's the way it has to work. And the rest of your expenses, please keep your receipts and your mileage, and drop them by when you get back from the conference, and we'll reimburse you, as according to the charter.
Are we all staying at the same hotel?
No. We're not. It's in here.
Council, no further discussion, the council meeting will be adjourned.